Mine is red.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order this public hearing of the Tacoma Park Commemoration Commission. My name is Richard O'Connor, and I am the co-chair of the commission. Members of the commission present tonight include Bruce Williams on my left and our co-chair Jessica Kessler on my right. Last November, the mayor and the city council suggested, requested that the Commemoration Commission develop recommendations regarding the naming of the five Civil War general street names currently located in the city of Tacoma Park. These five street names include Grant Avenue, Lee Avenue, Sherman Avenue, Sheridan Avenue, and Hancock Avenue. The commission has researched the history of these street names and is holding this public hearing to solicit comments on three options identified by the commission. A summary of the history of these street names is available and is available on a handout over on the desk, and that handout will be included in the record for tonight's hearing. The three options which the commission is requesting comments on are: One, the city pursue renaming of the streets through a formal process through Montgomery County. Two, the city maintain the existing street names but add a commemorative name and/or signage to provide historical context for the existing names. Under this option, we'd like to have, receive and hear comments on these two options of adding a commemorative name or signage for an interpretation of the historical context. The third option which we're asking to comment on is that the city make no changes to the current street names. The hearing will begin with the presentation on the process for changing a street name in Montgomery County. Next, we will take public testimony in the order of speakers who have signed up to speak, and those who have not signed up, we will ask you to come forward after we call those who have signed up. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. We'll be keeping a record of that, and please do not yield a portion of your time to other speakers. The record will be kept, held open until Friday, February 2nd, this coming Friday at 5:00 PM for those who wish to submit written testimony. Written testimony should be submitted to the city clerk, and on the handout of the agenda is the website ID where you can go and submit comments directly through the website. The commission is going to meet in February to review the record, and then we'll forward its recommendation on the remaining, the renaming of the Civil War general street names to the mayor and city council by mid-March of 2018. With that, I'd like to ask Rosalind Grigsby with the city to discuss the process for renaming a street.
Thank you. I'm Rosalind Grigsby, Community Development Manager for the city of Tacoma Park. I am not a county representative. I'm here to explain the process, but in the absence of that person, I'm filling the gap. I just wanted to outline how a street name changes would need to occur in Montgomery County. In the county, the county has jurisdiction over the street names, not the city. They've outlined a process which is really resident-driven for people to choose to rename the streets they live on. That would require, generally requires 100% of the residents. It's usually used for very small streets when there's a particular problem that might exist. In my discussions with county planners, they have indicated that if there were a majority, a solid majority was the language used, of residents signing the petition, then the director of the planning department would go ahead and forward the petition to the planning board for a hearing and decision. Ordinarily, it requires the 100%. A second option available to the city would be to request that the planning board enter into an MOU with the city detailing the specific request of changes to street names and the board, and a request that the board waive the usual resident petition process. The MOU would identify the process to be followed, the criteria for acceptable changes, and then the planning board would have to approve it. If the city takes this approach, the criteria, timeline, process, and outcome are uncertain at this point. If the city wanted to change the processes, the city could try to amend either the State Regional District Act, which grants authority to the county for a street naming, or try to amend the county guidelines. The county guidelines, by the way, are on the montgomeryplanning.org website and are addressing and street naming for people who want to look it up themselves. I'll quickly just highlight some of the requirements for a resident petition process. It would include how the public interest is served by changing the names, what the specific problem or confusion is that's being addressed, a list of all residents and businesses that are, that would be impacted because their addresses would be on that street, and signatures affirming a consent to have the street name changed. Any missing signatures would be viewed as opposition to the proposal. And information indicating any historical significance of street names. The naming guidelines are detailed at great length in the county's own manual, but a couple of the interesting ones are that they restrict the length to 14 characters, no hyphens, apostrophes, no duplication of any names or similar sounding names. You can't, you can no longer have an Elm Street, Elm Court, Elm Avenue, Elm Terrace, and Elm Byway. You can't have similar sounding names like Shadow Avenue and Chateau Avenue. And the interesting, probably most important one for our discussion is that the street name integrity should be maintained for the entire length of the street, and the county's preference is that any streets that cross jurisdictions in or out of the county also maintain the name into the next jurisdiction. The notification process, if a street name is changed, the county notifies many government agencies, postal service, Department of Assessments and Taxation, WSSC, fire and rescue police, zoning permitting, and many others. The responsibilities for a resident whose street name has been changed are similar to those of a person, a person undertakes when they, when they move. They would have to notify the Department of Motor Vehicles, utility companies, banks, social security records, credit cards, mortgages, and so on. Any questions?
Do we know if there have been any street name changes in the past 50 years in Tacoma Park?
There has been one that I'm aware of, not nearly that long ago, maybe four years ago. It was Hayward Avenue, which has a small part of it that intersects with Sligo Creek. There are three houses, and then there's a break in the street, and it continues further south. And so for those three houses at Sligo, they had difficulties getting deliveries and giving directions to people because they would try to come up Hayward, and they couldn't go through. And so that small, almost cul-de-sac area was renamed, I think it is actually Hayward Court now, or Hayward Lane, and the rest is Hayward Avenue. Other than that, I asked the legal counsel this morning how common name changes are, and he said they're very rare in the county. I don't know of any others in Tacoma Park.
I do know that they changed the numbering of the streets in 1956 and 1957. My address is 7110 Maple Avenue, and it was 110 Maple Avenue. I understand that was an extensive process.
It must have been, and the naming guidelines include all kinds of information about numbering, and that it extends out from the Capitol, and that I, I think they want to adhere to that and not have to do that again.
Is any of the, any information that you were able to provide this evening different from what was previously identified?
The process by which the city might enter into an MOU with the county is different than I had understood it to be three weeks ago. It's a much more specific process, and that's because the county authority to name streets is in the state law, and so they can't slice off that authority to the city carte blanche. It has to be in a very specific request.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now I'll start calling those who have signed up. Remember, we're asking you to keep your comments to three minutes. We'll be timing them up here on the dais. There'll be a 30-second warning to wrap up, and we'll try to, try to keep things moving along. Lori and Bill Kelly, Grant Avenue.
Hi. When I signed up for both of us, I thought it was just attendance, not speaking, so it's just me.
Okay.
I'm happy to say that I live on Grant Avenue, which is a Civil War general representing the North. My husband is a retired real estate agent, and he brought up some legal questions based on his experience. He advised that you check with your real estate consultant on clouding the title on deeds and mortgages, that there are a lot of different mortgage companies, but a mortgage company might not allow a title change, or if it does allow it, it might raise the rate. Homeowners must petition county court on street name change normally. I don't know how it would be if the, if the city's doing it. And to avoid any errors, a homeowner really should get a paid attorney to file, and we're wondering if the city is going to pay for the attorney to do that. Also, title insurance should be purchased to protect homeowners from any errors or anything that might happen in the future. One way or the other, changing street names costs homeowners time and puts them at a financial risk, so that was the only thing I had to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, the next person who signed up, Justice Swan, Sherman Avenue.
Okay. Good evening, neighbors and board members of Tacoma Park. I have come tonight to express the thoughts of my fellow neighbors on Sherman Avenue and my schoolmates at Tacoma Park Middle School. Following an informal survey, 80% of respondents would like to keep the names the same, and 20% expressed feelings that it is time for a change. I won't be reading all the opinions, but instead summarizing their core message. As I, okay, hold on. The Civil War was the defining event in many people's lives, and the time and acknowledging that in ways such as the street names was important to them. Changing the street name feels like whitewashing history, a bit like excising officials who have been fallen out of favor from Kremlin photographs. There is so much that the US has tried to hide, first and foremost, the institution of slavery and a continuing oppression of its descendants. It is far past time to bring these hidden acts out into the open and face up to them. And as so many on this thread have pointed out, far better to put our energy and resources into bettering people's lives and attitudes. We have many streets that are named after high-achieving citizens across the US. However, if one of them gets exposed for something that was illegal or something that undermines the direct focus of why we put them there for all to see, what will we do? We can embrace it, which is what we should do and what we're doing here, because if we ignore their ill act, we don't have the difficult decision, and in the end, the past will repeat itself. Electing to change the names means that we don't teach it in schools and thus make our kids oblivious to this thing that we all try to ignore. I urge that we embrace the past, face it head-on, and finally face this thing that we all know is wrong. Embracing our past is how we grow as a nation and sustain our democracy. This is the very reason I have come to speak to you today. The First Amendment does not only protect those communications we want to hear and read, but perhaps we should hear and read to address it head-on. If you decide to change the street names, there will be some consequences in time and money, as previously stated. Let me give you some examples. People who have to rely on Medicare and social security checks would have to spend, send in different addresses to be mailed to. This would cost their time and their own money. If you went to a doctor, you would have to change your contact information. This is pretty much the same for any kind of mail and business that requires your contact information. Another nightmare is that they must change the maps for the metro. This would in turn require Metro buses and other forms of communication and transportation to change, to change the route information, maps, and the voice actor for the Metro bus. This would cost the state, county, city, and transportation entity lots of money and a massive amount of time, and I believe we have better things to do with our time and money. In conclusion, as one neighbor said, her father used to tell her that when addressing the concerns of the street names, that she should not worry because Lee is boxed in by Sherman, Grant, and Carroll. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next person who signed up, Arthur Olson.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock and Lee. When we decided pesticides on lawns were a problem, we didn't decide to make no change, and we didn't start referring to neonicotinoids using the commemorative term "bee buddies." We acted to get the pesticides off city lawns. I hope the commission will select a similar path and recommend that we change the names of streets with Confederate names and get the signs off city street corners. At the city council retreat last week, the city manager noted the city may be able to get street naming authority, at least partially, from the county. I hope the commission will recommend pursuing this authority. I've heard a concern about costs to property owners of street name changes. We're in the midst of a multi-year, multimillion-dollar project to fix sidewalk access problems, and we don't expect the owners of adjoining properties to pay for the fixes. I hope the commission will recommend that expenses arising from street renaming be borne by the city. Opponents of Black Lives, of the Black Lives Matter movement adopted the slogan "All Lives Matter." I worry about us taking an "all streets matter" approach here. I hope the commission will focus on streets with Confederate names. I've heard a sense that we should focus on steps that will have a greater impact on current-day racism. I believe we have the capacity to both rename streets and take other steps. I hope the commission's recommendations will acknowledge that street renaming is only part of the work that's needed. I've heard a concern that if we rename streets, we may need to do so again as we learn more about history. I believe we can avoid this problem by extending the city's practice of naming streets for trees. As examples, Lee can become Lemon, Jackson can become Jacaranda, and Boyd can become Boe. I hope the commission will consider using tree names as a recommendation to the council. Finally, in addition to its work on streets, I hope the commission will make a recommendation about renaming the city's Jackson Boyd Neighborhood Park. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you got there? Jeff Truso?
Trunzo.
Okay. Jeff Truso, is it Truso? Trunzo.
That was close, Trunzo. Jeff Trunzo, 119 Sherman Avenue. We will align with the young Mr. Justice Swan's comments from Sherman Avenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Pierre Perrault.
Pierre Perrault, Willow Avenue. Willow doesn't give us any problems. I said to someone earlier today, I think our founder, founder of Tacoma Park, B.F. Gilbert, was, had a great deal of foresight and was a wise man to name all the streets after trees and not get into the human issues. There's a human issue here that's very complex, that can be looked at in a number of different ways. I'll tell you how I look at it. Tacoma Park is not the kind of place, I've lived here 26 years now, it's not the kind of place where I worry about a resurgence of hate thoughts that have emerged since the end of the Civil War, and especially in recent years. We're not that kind of place. I, in my 26 years in Tacoma Park, I've never seen a Confederate flag flying anywhere, trying to be in the face of others who respect the outcome of the Civil War. I think we also have to look at the historical context in which these streets were named, and we don't know exactly who did the naming, although it's probable. I've always thought that General Carroll's mother, who was, who outlived him by three years, had a hand in picking names that her son would have liked. And I think the perspective in those days, as opposed, say, to the 1920s, when we saw, you know, the strong force of the Ku Klux Klan, back in the 1890s, this was not that long after the war, a period in which there were many attempts at reconciliation, and I suspect, General Carroll, that Robert E. Lee was, was a very honorable man and a military man to be respected. If you read about how things happened at the onset of the Civil War, you'll find that it's with great reluctance and only with a great deal of military professionalism and passion for his native state of Virginia that he took on the job that he took on and ended up being on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. I'd also like to, thanks Pierre, for doing some historical research for the commission and digging out the records. We actually do have the trustee's sale notice from 1894?
93.
93. Of when General Carroll's property was, went into foreclosure. So I appreciate the, the work that Pierre's done in digging out some of those records. The next person, Roger Allen.
I would like to ask, after the public has had their chance to say something, why change the names? I can think of several reasons, and why do they intend to be changed too? I think that would be a useful thing to tell the folks here. If Grant cannot be honored with the Tacoma Park street name, then perhaps Jefferson and Lincoln are not worthy of the honor. If streets can only be named for perfect human beings, then we might as well find more tree names for our streets. Lee fought for slavery. The other four men, however imperfect, however much they might not meet the standards of behavior we might demand today, were extended the honor of having our streets named for them because they fought against slavery and for freedom. It is an insult to their memories to lump them in with Lee. Make Lee Avenue into Blair Lee Avenue, if you must, but honor the men, imperfect though they might be, who fought to make men free. The following is a quote from Colonel Ty Sidula, who is the head of the History Department at the United States Military Academy. "Slavery is the great shame of American history. No one denies that, but it is to America's everlasting credit that it fought the most devastating war in its history in order to abolish slavery. As a soldier, I am proud that the United States Army, my army, defeated the Confederates. In its finest hour, soldiers wearing the blue uniform, almost 200,000 of them former slaves themselves, destroyed chattel slavery, freed 4 million men, women, and children from human bondage, and saved the United States of America." The four Union generals in question were absolutely central to that, and turn your backs on them, you turn your back on their accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tina Mari.
Thank you. I live in 116 Lee Avenue, Unit 409, one of the two rare condominium buildings that happened to be located on Lee Avenue. I actually have to admit that while I, well, the first thing I would task the commission to consider is who is this prospective name change really helping, and how is it actually helping them? I can tell you from my individual perspective as a homeowner, as an individual person, the consequences of changing my street name is rather significant for me, both logistically and financially. Because I'm an individual person, my, the ownership of my condominium is held in a trust, and I would have to take legal action to ensure that the trust would convey to whatever property would be housed on the street subsequently named. And that comes with hiring lawyers and filing paperwork. And to be quite honest, when I found out after the initial meeting took place without my knowledge, I was actually quite put upon by that prospect. And so I would really like some understanding of who this prospective name change is meant to help and how exactly that is going to happen. It's sort of an interim sensibility of renaming or commemorating the streets might be appropriate, but I really don't see what gain is garnered by changing the street names at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Xena Garrison Cross. Was I close?
Close.
Close.
You got the Xena right, so that's fine. I live on Sheridan Avenue. I've lived there since the 80s, and I also am a little concerned about the burden to the homeowners. We barely can get our mail as it is now. We've finally been able to get our mail. If anything, we're requesting our street name be changed to Sheridan, not Sherman, as we have the same street numbers as others. But in all reality and being serious, we would like to keep our street name. We've had babies born on that street. We'd have to change birth records, as far as I know. I just think it's an inconvenience, and I agree with the young man over here. Why try to erase history? Thank you.
Next speaker, Martha Feldman.
Hi. I live at 7414 Jackson Avenue, and may I say, it's nice to see you, Bruce. I've been thinking about you for a long time, and Mr. O'Connor too, who taught the class on the Constitution. So, thank you. I just found out about this today, so I did not have much time to really write anything up, but as a resident of Jackson Avenue, a not very admirable person, I have to say I believe I would be in the future affected by this, because he was certainly a lot worse than General Grant, and, well, General Sherman wasn't that great either. So I understand why people object to the names, but I have to say that I think it would be a terribly unfair burden to the people who live on these streets. would be a terribly unfair burden to the people who live on these streets. If you've ever moved, you know it can take years. And that doesn't include changing your legal documents related to your house. I did not know about that before, but that makes it a lot more significant and unfair to me. I've spoken to two other people who live on the street, both of whom are vehemently against the change. And we also have had a recent death on our street, the husband of a woman who's in her late 70s. She comes from Ghana. She does not speak English that well. And I just can't imagine asking her to go through all these procedures when she has financial, not that we're being asked, but it could happen on another street, let me put it that way, when she has all these problems that she has to deal with right now. So I had suggested in the past that we name the streets after someone else, and unfortunately, I only thought about my own street, so I thought we could name it Jesse Jackson Avenue. And, you know, there are probably other names for the other people as well. And I also think that, I don't, I don't think it's helpful to erase the past. It was pretty bad, and I think if we can afford it, it would be good to either do something with historic Tacoma or put signs up on the street explaining why these people were problematic in history. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Silverman.
Good evening. My name's Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue. Each of these generals fought here in Maryland. It's a big part of our history. None of them was perfect. Phil Sheridan, who defeated Jubal Early in the Shenandoah Mountains, kept Maryland in the Union, did wonderful things, but after the war, he was the one who said that the only good Indian is a dead Indian. General Lee, much vilified, taught America how to lose. We've seen a lot of wars, civil wars around the world, where the losers don't know how to lose. But he became a model for the very bitter and emotional people of the South to accept, to accept the defeat and not to glorify their struggle. That was, he did a great, a great thing for America. He and Lincoln, what he did was comparable to Lincoln's speech, the Second Inaugural, talking about malice towards non-charity for all. So I think these, these people are part of our past. They're part of the education of our children. I was delighted to hear the young man speak. I agree with everything he said. I think he's, I think we should listen to him. You know, you see sometimes, I like to watch these genealogy programs on TV and how interesting it is to see people who were so liberal have slave owners in their background, have African-Americans who had slaves. We're a mixed lot. We are an imperfect lot, but we should remember our past. This is not a case where the streets were named as some of the 1920s monuments were built to put people down. I think they were named because people had veterans in their families and respected the great struggle that had happened and were somewhat in awe of it. It is, it is a great and terrible thing that in this country we abolish slavery in the most, in the bloodiest way possible. But we did it. That's our past. Don't forget it. Don't, don't, don't be contemptuous of it. Nothing good will happen of it. So I urge you to, to respect Maryland, to respect our forbears, and to respect our young people by keeping things as they are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Bob Gilden.
Thank you very much. Bob Gilden, 7309 Willow Avenue. And I would like to speak in favor of the name change, but not all of the name changes. In fact, I don't think anybody really is asking for the streets named after Union generals in the Civil War to have their names changed. I feel fine about having a Grant Street and a Sherman and a Sheridan Street. I feel quite unhappy about having a Robert E. Lee Street in this town. And I think, I think that we can do, we can change that name. And I also want to raise the question of who is Jackson Street, Jackson Avenue, named after? I've actually talked to Pierre Perrault about that. This was a few months ago, and he said at the time that that was buried in history. We don't know if it's named after Andrew Jackson or Stonewall Jackson. I would suggest strongly that if, if we do find that it was named after Stonewall Jackson, a famous Confederate general, that that would be ripe for a change also. But to have it clustered in as the Civil War generals, you know, we have to consider them all the same, seems to me quite incorrect to me and trying to lump in the good guys and the bad guys. And I am quite willing to say that Lee and Stonewall Jackson were bad guys and they fought for the wrong cause, and thank goodness, they fought for the losing cause, and it would be a good thing to change those names. If, if we want to make sure that we're not forgetting our history, we could change the names to Harriet Tubman Avenue, or Frederick Douglass Avenue, or other, other names that are associated with the freedom struggle and the end of slavery, rather than the people who fought on the wrong side of the war. I just want to point out, you know, changing historical names happens all the time. I've spent a bunch of time in Russia, and there are a lot of streets there that used to be called Stalin Avenue and Lenin Avenue, and they got changed after the communist regime was overthrown. So, you know, let's, let's loosen up. We don't, we don't have to be attached to these names forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the list of people who have signed up. Who would like to come?
Hank.
Hank?
Good evening. I'm happy to see Jessica up there. My name is Hank Prensky. I live at 7921 Sligo Creek Parkway. I'd like to, my street to be changed to Edinburgh Lane, so mail actually gets delivered and service people can find it. But that's a different story. I'm here to speak in favor of changing the names of Lee and Jackson Avenue. I don't think that would be erasing history. I think that would be ceasing to honor traitors to our country. I have a lot of sympathy for people who are concerned about the bureaucratic efforts and the financial costs of what the changes could mean to them, they who live on those streets. However, as Mr. Gilden pointed out, streets change names all the time. They've happened innumerable times in the history of this country. I'm sure the U.S. Post Office, Postal Service can continue to deliver mail to the old as well as the new addresses, the new street names, for many years to come. I doubt that everybody in the past, I'm a real estate agent by vocation, I doubt that everybody in the past has had to endure massive legal costs every time street names change. I'm sure that there are few, if any, legal costs involved. I think we can talk to real estate attorneys and legal, legal departments in the state and county governments to confirm that. But I don't think that everybody who's lived on a street whose name has changed goes back, I mean, half the streets in Tacoma Park have changed names since the original plating. And we haven't had to go back and change the, the legal documents, the deeds to our properties. I don't think that's necessary. So I don't think there's a lot of costs. And frankly, for the folks who live on those streets whose names could be changed, I'd point out that address labels arrive in the mail at my house more times than I can count and recycle. I think the new dresses will come with, with address labels at least a half a dozen times in the next few months, so you don't even have to go out and print new address labels. I would be in favor of changing the, the street names and adding historical documents, rather than adding historical documents and not changing the street names. I think we could explain the history of the Civil War and why, for 100 years, the names were Lee and Jackson, and why we chose to change them. And frankly, I'd like to see them changed to John Fahey and to Goldie Hawn Avenues.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to?
My name's Lyndon Wilkes. I live on Willow Avenue. This young gentleman behind here said almost everything I would have said, but I would say that I'm not in favor of changing the names, but if you're going to start changing names, you should change the names of every street that you can find some kind of reprehensible background or behavior. You shouldn't be cherry picking particular things and letting certain people define what's objectionable and other, other things are waived because they're just zeroed in on one kind of objectionable person.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I'm Carol Hotten, 101 Sheridan Avenue. And I just wanted to, I pretty much agree with everything that the people who are opposed to changing the names, I very much, I agree with all of that. I also wanted to point out, following on the previous comment, that there have been concerns expressed over people who might feel offended by some of these names. And I totally agree that Stonewall Jackson and Robert E. Lee were traitors to this country and were reprehensible. What they fought for was completely reprehensible. I grew up in a household where I thought that "Dam" and "Confederate" was one word. So I, I hold no sympathy for these individuals who are quote-unquote "honored," but the idea of changing the names because these individuals are reprehensible doesn't sit well with me. There's, there's, as an historian, it, I find it rather disturbing, going back to that notion of erasing history. There's another point, though. I think that African-Americans have a legitimate grievance, concern, you know, are likely to feel offended by these names. Native Americans certainly should feel offended by some of the other people who are being defended, who are being honored. However, in my personal history, I've lived on Sheridan Avenue since 1964, and the only people who I have encountered who have expressed concern or taken offense at those names have been white Southerners who buy into the notion of, of the lost cause. So as was pointed out, different people have, have different takes on these names. So it's, yeah, it just depends on, on whose oxes is being gored. So, yes, maybe we should change all the street names to numbers, or plants, or, you know, something that's inoffensive. But instead, I, I think that for both practical and historical reasons, we should keep the names as is. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Ricks, and I live on Lee Avenue, and I've been there since 1966. And I understand the nature of what's going on in the country right now with the removing of the statues and all things Confederate and all things that we are opposed to. However, I'm in agreement that I think we should leave the names as they are. They are a part of history, whether we like it or not. And I think the best thing that we could do is maybe do some type of plaque at either the beginning or the end, or at Grant, where the streets begin to take on the names of the generals, explaining the historical concept. But to go through changing all of these addresses, and you're talking tax returns and medical records, I think that's going a stretch too far. But I understand what's going on, but I think there's a better way to address it than changing all the street names and going through, you know, a lot of what appears to me to be rigmarole when there could be a better way or a better approach to accomplishing the goals with less disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to, to speak? Okay, I guess with that, we will close the public hearing. As I said, we will be keeping the record open until 5:00 PM on Friday, and you can submit your comments directly to the website. It's an easy-to-access, public comment access website. We will be compiling the, all of the comments, and the commission will be meeting in February to consider those comments and to, to consider the recommendations that we're going to forward to the, to the City Council and by mid-March. And then I believe the City Council will plan to have a public hearing on the course of action that they, they choose. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and we'll be talking to you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.